Ladies and gentlemen, the microphones are on, the cameras are rolling. Good evening and welcome to Geneva's City Council Chamber. Tonight's regularly scheduled meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Michael Clemens.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Ian Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim Reddick.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. Appropriately so. If Mr. Schneider and Mr. O'Malley would not mind, I'd like to invite both these gentlemen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. John and Kyle, would you kindly join us at the podium? And for the benefit of all those tuning in, I think I told you this before the meeting, this is broadcast live. There are two cameras, one above each flag and there's one behind you. So if behind you is your favorite pose, then you're in the right spot. So if I would, or if I could trouble you just both introduce yourselves.
I'm Kyle O'Malley.
I'm John Schneider.
Now, Mr. O'Malley, you're heading off to UW-Whitewater soon.
Yes.
And Kyle, or excuse me, John, you're gonna be a senior at Geneva High School.
Yes, correct.
Okay. The attorneys asked me to say the following. Do you know why you're here tonight? You and I both spoke prior to the meeting. And we're here, of course, to recognize your extraordinary heroism, your selfless act, your expression of humanity that we don't often see, particularly perhaps by folks as young as you. But you also shared with me that you too don't necessarily deserve all the credit.
That's correct.
And I thought that is truly an expression of selflessness. Would you care to share what you experienced that evening of August 11th, or that day, excuse me?
Yes, so me and him were driving home. We're in westbound lanes of I-88 and we see two large fireballs in eastbound lanes. So we then took the shoulder, we engaged our hazards and we pulled off onto the shoulder and we stopped, we sprinted down, and then we hopped over the median, the center divider. And then you can just see two cars on fire with one woman, she was unconscious, slumped over in the passenger seat, slumped over the center console into the driver's seat.
Yeah, and at that time, you know, both cars are on fire, the pavement around the cars were on fire, the passenger side of the car was on fire. So there wasn't really any spot that we could try to get in or to, into side of the vehicle because it was obviously all on fire. So I took out my flashlight and I started breaking the front of the windshield, trying to break it, and it was cracking and stuff like that, but it really wasn't working nowadays. You know, the windshields are tempered glass and stuff like that. So I, some lady was in the, I don't know, there was a bunch of people standing around and there was some lady, I'm pretty sure, was yelling fire extinguishers, the semi-trucks have fire extinguishers. So I turned around and you could see since all the traffic was stopped at that point in both lanes, that there was a semi-truck right there. So I turned around and I ran over to him and as I was running up to him, I was yelling, "Hey, I need your fire extinguisher, throw me your fire extinguisher." And he tossed it down to me, which is kinda funny because, you know, you'd think he would hand it to me, but he's so high up, he sort of tossed it at me, I'm like, wow. So I grab it and I run back across all four lanes, jump the median, and I start spraying the fire on the pavement so that we could walk around to the passenger side of the vehicle because that's where it was on fire and the passenger side vehicle, the side of it, the door, I sprayed that too. And then at that point...
You guys got this down pat during the mess, like this is...
Right. At that point, we were able to, we had enough of a workable area. And then myself and another good Samaritan, we start pulling on the passenger door trying to get it open because it got jammed during the crash.
The whole car got like compacted.
Right. So we're pulling on it, pulling on it, we were able to open it just enough that we had enough space to pull her out. John runs around to the other side, cuts the seatbelt, runs back around, and then us three were able to pull her out.
The guy lifts her up and he was like holding her most weight because she was dead weight at that point. So I went underneath and I was not sure which leg, but I was holding one of her legs from underneath as we were carrying her back. And we eventually, we sat her down on the pavement on the left shoulder of eastbound traffic and then I turn around and the whole car was, inside and out, was on fire.
So then we start doing a medical assessment on her. I'm supporting her neck while he starts going through, checking for other bumps, bruises, cuts, et cetera.
Yes, he's supporting her neck, he sees the guy of the other vehicle that was in the crash and his car was on fire too. He made it out, he went over to her, or him, and this nurse runs up to me, she goes, "I'm a nurse." I'm like, "Okay, cool, I need you to start holding her neck." So she starts holding the lady's neck that was on the ground and I start...
Were those the exact words, "okay, cool"?
Nah, I don't remember at the, I was like, maybe I said, "Great, thanks" or something. But I told her to start stabilizing the neck and I was going through like a medical assessment on her, you know, checking for broken bones, any bad bleeding, you know, that we needed to stop right away. And then at that time, some other lady, I think lady or man, was yelling, yelling that the car was on fire and then you could, you could see like the car was shooting out fire. So like we were really close at that time, maybe 20 feet away. So I'm like, "Okay, we need to pick her up and move her." So we picked her up, I don't know, four or five of us lifted her up. As we're walking down the shoulder, there's a, another pickup truck stopped there and as we're walking up to him, I'm like, "Put the pickup bed down," of the truck. So the guy and the girl who was in that pickup truck was in front of the crash and saw it happen and he pulled over and he stopped, put his pickup bed truck down and we sat her up on there and then that's, she sort of came through, like once we actually laid her down, she was coming through, so like she was able to sit up there. And then at that time, fire department got there.
They started putting out the two cars that were on fire. There was a third vehicle involved. They were parked on the right shoulder past the 123 exit, so we went to check on them. There were two adults and then a young child in the back in a car seat. They were able to get everything out, everybody out. And then he made sure, you know, just the baby's, because he was holding its head, so he checked the pupils, make sure they were dilating, he didn't have any serious head trauma. And then I made sure everyone else was okay in that vehicle. And then after that...
By that time, the fire department came, the state troopers were there. We helped out at that point a little bit. Kyle was asked by another fire department to hold the guy up because he was getting a little lightheaded, the one that was in the crash. So he held her up and then at that point, we just gave her reports to the state troopers and we were on our way back home.
Is that it? So, I know the council is curious, when did you receive your medical degrees?
Well, through the Lincolnshire Police Explorer Program that we're in, we do training. So one thing that we trained for was officer down first aid. The person in the crash may not have been an officer, but we were still able to perform first aid on her and everything, so...
That helped out a lot?
Yes.
I bet. So you hop back in your vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
And you head home?
Yeah.
At what point on that journey home did you both look at each other and say, "What the heck"?
I think it was when we stopped and grabbed gas.
Yes.
Because at that point, Kyle was like, "I'm not really sure if we should be driving." So we're like, "All right, let's get some gas." We just sort of hung out there for a little bit.
I would assume you were shaken. Not necessarily shaking, but shaken as to what just transpired and...
I know I wasn't out of breath during the whole thing, but when I got, when we got back into Kyle's car, I was just breathing heavy, just out of breath and...
Yeah.
I don't think it hit us at that point, you know, like it was, it was still settling in.
It takes a serious emotional and mental and physical toll being in a critical incident such as that. So it didn't quite hit us until, you know, everything had settled down and we were back in the car.
Did you sleep that evening?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a good sleep. Good rest.
It was a good rest, huh? Who was the first, who was the first person you called, each of you?
I called Dad. And then at that time, Mom was just blowing up my phone with phone calls.
Way to go, Mom.
So I, so then she started calling Kyle because I wasn't answering that much, or I wasn't answering at all because I was on the phone with Dad. And he's like, "Yep, we'll be home soon, we're just opting your grass, gas..."
I didn't call anyone. Mom and Dad were over at a friend's house and we just kind of showed up.
So this all transpires, you call Dad and Dad happens to be a state police soon-to-be captain?
Yes.
You don't say a word and just show up at your parents' friend's home?
Yes.
What were the first words out of your mouth?
Boy, do we have a story.
I'd love to open her up to the council as well, but I mean, by all means, if anyone has any questions or comments for Mr. Schneider or Mr. O'Malley, but... Yes, Alderman Ruby.
All right, this is also MacGyver, if you even know what that is. So I'm curious, what kind of flashlight you had on you and also how you cut the seatbelt and how and why you were prepared with these items, just driving down the street unexpectedly?
So for explorer meetings, we don't usually, we don't carry knives because we do like training and we don't want to fall out, open up and cut someone. But for details, which we were at, we were at the art fair up in Lincolnshire directing traffic and crossing people, I had my Spyderco knife on me and I went, when they were pulling at the door the first time, I went around because I saw it on her, went around to the driver's side and then sort of just reached in and cut. And then my flashlight is a stinger?
Streamlight stinger.
Streamlight stinger. After I turned it on...
I have no idea what that is. Do you have it on you?
No, I don't. It started to vibrate after I turned it on the first time, so haven't really used it since.
I know, Swiss Army knife, that's about the extent of my knowledge. All right. So do you take that pretty much everywhere you go? Is it always on you?
My flashlight?
Yeah, and your knife.
No, not my flashlight. I carry different knives.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
Not in school.
Well said, Mr. Schneider. Only two more days, you have to return to school, don't you?
Yes.
I mean, did you call the principal, Mr. Rogers, and say, "Dude, I'm not going to my senior year"?
No.
No?
I didn't do that.
Do you want to call him now? You two stand up there as if you are seasoned veterans. And to me, it's just, it's incredible. Not that I'm surprised at how graceful and extraordinarily eloquent you both are, but it's hard for me to fathom, at your respective ages, to perform such a duty and then just to cruise home. To me. Now, you both have family here today, or tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider, would you care to introduce those who are, including Yaya?
Yes.
Starting off, we've got Grandpa, Grandma, Papu, and Yaya. Papu is Greek for Grandpa and Yaya is Greek for Grandma. We have Mom, my Dad, my sister, and then Auntie Gal.
I've got Mom, Sally, and then Dad right there, Dan, and then my sister Paige, and then my buddy Kyle's here too.
Oh, yeah, Kyle.
Now, Schneider, oh, we got more folks?
Yes. Commander Watson, our leader of the Lincolnshire Police Explorer Post is out there, behind the doors.
I'm sure he's grateful you saved him a seat. Schneider, I understand your grandparents from Greece are flying home tomorrow.
Yes. Yep, Yaya leaves tomorrow.
12-hour flight?
Yes.
She has invited me to visit her in the lovely city where she's from? Anytime. What are your friends saying about you?
They're just kind of in shock, you know, they're just very...
Whoa. Now, I saw on social media though, lots of tweets saying, "Not surprised. If it was anyone, it would be you two." Wonderful, not surprised, I don't know, not about not being surprised about you two gentlemen. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, I'd say so.
And that's not, that's not pride, that's humility. You guys deserve the attention, you guys deserve the praise, your friends are obviously proud of you, this community's proud of you. What else you'd like to share with us? So what are you studying there, big guy, O'Malley, what are you?
Political science.
Political science?
Yes.
So you want to be unemployed the rest of your life?
Maybe a mayor of a small town.
Well, that's... That's even worse. Don't forget, don't forget, I've got a file on you. Did you have my brother as a teacher?
Yes.
Yeah, you're in serious trouble. So you're heading off to school soon?
Mm-hmm.
And how do you continue your training for this program?
I won't do it, I'll do it over longer breaks and then over the summer.
And ultimately in life, what do you aspire to be?
A state trooper.
Duh, right? Even stand like a state trooper.
Boy.
Do they, do they tell you how to stand?
Yes. They teach everything in the academy.
I can imagine.
Six months.
Schneider, how about you?
Police officer at one point, yes, maybe a welder, maybe something in the military, not for sure yet.
So you're going into your senior year?
Yes.
After your senior year, what are you thinking, anything other than what you've said or...
No.
To be determined?
Yes.
Counsel, any comments or questions for these two gentlemen? Alderman Kilburg, then Alderman Clemens?
I think the amazing thing is, is you'd mentioned that others were standing by, but you saw a need and you rushed in. Did you have any trepidation? I mean, I think the human instinct is, is I don't want to put my own life in danger. Why did two young men with a whole life ahead of you decide that this was the right thing to do? And obviously, you're well cast for the careers that you're looking to enter into, but I think you sort of defy human nature. What about it? Did you give each other support? Was it, do you think you would have done it alone? Or do you think the fact that the two of you were together and as a team, you took this action?
I think it definitely helped we were together. I would, I would stop and help out if I was alone.
Yep, same here.
But, you know, we weren't really thinking at that point, we were just acting on instinct.
The only time I started thinking something bad could happen is when I was by the hood of the car smashing the windshield, you heard the tires popping, right? There's four tires. But I heard more than four pops or booms or whatever you want to call them. And so I sort of thought about that for a second and then, I don't know, went right back to it.
Well, thank you for your heroism and it's great to see.
Thank you. And there was, as I mentioned, there was other people there too, it wasn't just us.
Right.
But it seemed like you took the charge. Congratulations.
You know, to Alderman Kilburg's point, and you'll hear it a lot this evening from our firefighters who are present, the command and control really came into play.
Yeah.
I love your responses, by the way, those are... Alderman Clemens?
Thank you, Mayor. So guys, wow, that's an incredible story. You cast a big shadow. I just want to say thank you and it actually is inspiring to see people of your age able to do, I mean, such an incredible act. I don't think I would have the composure to react the way you did. So it's just incredible and it's encouraging for the future, actually. I'm excited that people like you are here to step up. So thank you very much.
Gentlemen, we have a proclamation to read in your honor. Would you allow me the courtesy of reading that aloud?
Sure.
How about you, O'Malley, is it okay?
Yes.
City of Geneva, Illinois proclamation celebrating, incorrect, honoring hometown heroes Kyle O'Malley and John Schneider. Whereas on Saturday, August 11, 2018, Geneva resident Kyle O'Malley and John Schneider were traveling on the Reagan Tollway and came upon the scene of a multi-vehicle accident in the opposite lane of traffic and, whereas, upon surveying the wreckage, O'Malley and Schneider pulled over and immediately ran to the scene where they identified an unconscious subject in one of the vehicles. And whereas, O'Malley and Schneider pulled the occupant out of the vehicle with seconds to spare before the vehicle was fully engulfed in flames. And whereas, O'Malley and Schneider are currently in training as cadets in the Lincolnshire Law Enforcement Explorer Program. And whereas, O'Malley and Schneider risked life and limb in their efforts to rescue the vehicle's occupant. And whereas, the City of Geneva recognizes their bravery and heroism in helping to save the life of a fellow driver. And now therefore, I, Kevin Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, Illinois, along with the City Council and the community, honor John and Kyle by proclaiming Tuesday, August the 21st, 2018, as Kyle O'Malley and John Schneider Hometown Heroes Day in the City of Geneva. Last day of summer. So Schneider, your last day of summer is your day, baby.
Yes. Pretty incredible.
Gentlemen, stick around because there's some other folks here this evening that would like to say a few words to honor you as well. You may recognize these two gentlemen over your, respectively, your right shoulder and your left shoulder, about to take the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. President of Geneva, my name is Lieutenant Matt Hotch and I represent District 15 of the Illinois State Police and this is Lieutenant Joseph Bradley. We're both lieutenants in District 15 where this incident occurred, assigned to IED. We're honored here to be joining you today and thank you, Mayor, for inviting us to represent these fine young gentlemen and hopefully they've done a great job. I can't do much recruiting, recruiting for our future figures, so... And Mayor, yeah, they gotta stand up straight.
Do that.
At the hallway in groups of six, but Kyle's already squared away and ready to go. You don't mind me a couple things to read on behalf of the Illinois State Police?
Please do, sir. Please do.
All right, first, Kyle was pointing stuff up here, you're standing just right, just right. All right. Illinois State Police, District 15, this certificate is awarded to Kyle O'Malley. You are hereby commended for your efforts in reference to a multi-vehicle fiery crash that occurred on August 11, 2018 at approximately 5:56 PM. The crash occurred in the area of Interstate 88 eastbound and Maples 123. You helped extricate an unconscious passenger entrapped within her vehicle, which was on fire. As a result of your heroic efforts, this passenger was safely removed from the vehicle without incident. Thank you for a job well done. Signed, Captain Robert Meter, District 15 Commander. First of all, I'm a fellow Geneva resident and I'm even more honored to be here today. The other part is I've known John since he was about nine or 10 years old. So I'm another one that's not surprised, like you see on the social media. Illinois State Police, District 15, this certificate is awarded to John B. Snyder. You're hereby commended for your efforts in reference to a multi-vehicle fiery crash that occurred on August 11, 2018 at approximately 5:56 PM. The crash occurred in the area of Interstate 88 eastbound and Maples 123. You helped extricate an unconscious passenger entrapped within her vehicle, which was on fire. As a result of your heroic efforts, this passenger was safely removed from the vehicle without incident. Thank you for a job well done. Signed, Captain Robert Meter, District 15 Commander.
Gentlemen, it is tradition that you buy dinner this evening? I know that you have a full evening ahead of you and hopefully that's an evening of celebration, not just with your family, but with others as well. So thank you for allowing us to play a small role in recognizing what you have done and the honor you've brought to the City of Geneva as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Yaya, you gotta go home and pack.
I'm ready. And thank God you put what, the 21st, I'm flying the 21st.
I know.
I remember the date.
We should have called it Yaya Day. Yaya is Greek for grandma. Yaya's leaving tomorrow. You know, if you want an escort, I'm sure the state police would be happy to try to bring her. Ladies and gentlemen, item 3B is administer the oath of office for firefighter paramedics Derek Johnston, Brian Schick, and Scott Castner. At this time, I'd like to invite Derek Johnston to the podium. How are you, sir?
Doing well, how are you, sir?
Good to see you.
You too.
You've got a adoring fan club with you as well this evening, correct?
Yes, I've heard they met you already.
Oh, yeah. They were here at 4 o'clock. So you currently live in Shenahan, Illinois?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Your father Gary, mother Sharon, sister Janelle. And it says here you have a dog, is it Caleb?
Yes, sir.
You know, we allow dogs now, it's friendly.
Yeah. No, he's awesome.
Although we have a sign though. Providence Catholic High School in New Lenox, Illinois. Lewis University earned your bachelor's degree.
Yes, sir.
Your interests include outdoors, concerts. What kind of concerts?
Generally, country concerts.
No kidding? You go to Country Thunder every year?
Yeah, I do.
Really? Do you take a mobile home and all that stuff?
Uh, yeah. We build a trailer and it's a two-story trailer that we bring to...
You bring a two-story trailer?
Yeah. I go with a group of about 40 and, yeah.
No kidding?
It's pretty excessive.
Excessive?
Yes, sir.
Who's your favorite, who's your favorite country artist?
Eric Church would be up there, Garth Brooks.
Oh, wow, some of the old timers, Garth Brooks, man, he's an old timer.
Yeah, that's my mom, so...
That's your mom?
She taught me a thing or two.
You like fishing as well?
Yes, sir.
It says here, "New restaurants." Explain.
I don't like going to the same place twice, generally speaking.
So are you a foodie?
I do enjoy different types of food, yeah.
Do you take a picture of your food prior to eating it?
I do not, I'm not a Snapchatter or whatever.
No?
Yes.
You also enjoy traveling?
Yes, sir.
And do you travel nationally and internationally or...
Generally nationally. I did get an opportunity to go to Italy and Greece last year.
You did? Nice.
So, yeah, generally I only have so much time on my hands, so I usually stay pretty local, but...
And when you travel, is it the two-story mobile home that you take or is it...
No, that's actually, it's a friend's, we just borrow it for the weekend, you know.
Uh-huh.
But, yeah.
Where are you traveling to next?
Sounds like I'm going to Nashville pretty soon here, so...
For?
Well, maybe my sister's birthday is coming around the corner.
And... Why the fire service?
So I grew up in a household with a mother that has more than one issue health-wise. So at a young age, she had cancer. And then over time, the cancer was focused near her chest. So she had chemo on her chest, radiation and so forth. She ended up having heart problems. So the medical service and the ability to help other people as they helped my family over the past really kind of made me pursue something where I felt like I can make a difference, so...
That's nice.
It's very family-oriented.
That's nice.
Absolutely.
Are you aware that your dad used the back door to get in the building tonight?
It's very possible. He tends to do that very often.
He literally rang the horn and it was knocking. Said, "My son's Derek." I said...
He gets confused easy, so it's all right.
How's that going for you, Dad? You're joining a lovely group of people.
Absolutely.
As you well know. What makes it most proud for you to join the Geneva Fire Service?
So just as they did research on me, I did research on them.
Very good.
And I appreciate the family orientation that they have. And I appreciate the family orientation that they have, the ability to work together and to think that I'm gonna be somewhere and called a family more than just a place of work. That's what I've always looked for and that's what I appreciate most about this organization.
That's wonderful. Well, we invite you to invite whomever you'd like to join you while the city clerk administer the oath of office, so.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, the floor is yours. Mr. Johnston?
Absolutely.
Did I hear an apology there to Dad? Mr. Schick, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you doing, Mayor?
Good, good. Grew up in Palos Hills. Graduated from Illinois State University in 2013 with a Bachelor of Science degree in history, politics, and government.
Yes, sir.
After college, you worked in the health insurance industry for a couple of years.
Naturally.
And what's that?
Naturally.
Naturally, yeah. Yeah, it seems like a great segue right there, man. Wasn't your cup of tea, huh?
No.
Were you a doctor? Attended and graduated from MABUS 24's 2016 Fire Academy as the valedictorian and Brian Carey Award winner.
Yes, sir.
I think we all know what valedictorian means.
Right.
But the Brian Carey Award, would you kindly share with us what that means?
Absolutely. So Brian Carey was a Homewood firefighter who lost his life in a, in a, what we call flashover in a fire. He was a two-year, he was on the job for two years, so.
Wow.
It was an honor.
You worked as a part-time firefighter/EMT for the Hanover Park Fire Department for about one and a half years.
Yes, sir.
With Scott Castner?
With Scott Castner.
Wow. And you graduated from Silver Cross Hospital's Paramedic Program just this past May with none other than Derrick Johnston?
Absolutely.
So you guys don't have any other friends? You just kind of hang out?
That's it.
That's it, huh?
Yeah, that's it. And my parents and I know still.
Wow, wow. That's impressive. Why the fire service, Mr. Schick?
Um, my dad's been in the fire service for 30 years.
We had the honor of meeting him earlier this evening.
Absolutely. So, um, you know, after college, I did the, kind of what my mom does, sales, and I quickly realized it wasn't for me, so I decided to stop, you know, goofing off, you know, and let's go into what we really want to do, so. Want to help people, always been interested in hearing what my dad has been doing and my mom as well, but more drawn to.
Nice recovery, by the way.
Right. She cooks dinner.
Well done.
She cooks dinner, so.
So you always had that visceral feeling that the fire service was something you were attracted to?
Absolutely. I don't know if I was always ready for it, but I definitely made that decision.
Well, that's an interesting statement. So you weren't always ready for it?
Right.
What makes you ready now?
Um, I don't know, it's just a feeling that you're ready to, kind of what we just, you know, we were all talking about with the Mr. O'Malley and Schneider, just willing to go into danger to help people.
Well, your dad's a seasoned firefighter.
He is.
Professional. Mom and dad both, I would assume, are not just proud, but there's got to be a sense of unease about the career you've chosen. Is that a fair statement?
Um, I don't know, we've been around it for 30 years, so, I mean, maybe a little bit. I don't know, I don't, I can't speak for them.
Yeah, you can, you got the podium, man.
Maybe a little bit.
What's your message to younger folks who are considering a career choice like yours?
Um, you have to take it very seriously, so. And you have to know the steps to take, so. Not a, you know, it's not the easiest field to get into, so if you really want to do it, you have to do your research and not just, you can't Google it, you gotta, you gotta ask people, so. You gotta know people and get the right info, so.
Absolutely. And you have a fan club here tonight as well?
Of two. And, and Scott and Derrick.
I just wanted to reaffirm that.
Yes.
Well, obviously, you are more than welcome to invite whomever you'd like to join you as, you are administer the oath by our city clerk.
Excellent.
And don't forget the badge afterward is pinned on.
Right, right, right. We won't.
And we got you a Velcro one just to.
Yes, right.
In the city of Geneva, county of Geneva.
Dusalumisware.
Dusalumisware.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
The duties of firefighter. The duties of office of firefighter/paramedic.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We already know who your friends are.
Yes, sir. A few of them.
You call Woodridge home?
Yes, sir.
And I had the honor of meeting your wife and we need to make certain that everyone gets to meet your son, three-month-old Carter.
Yes, sir. He's great.
He's doing great tonight.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, I'm proud of him. I'm glad he's quiet.
Worked as an automotive technician for 10 years before becoming a firefighter/paramedic.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I did that for a while, straight out of high school.
Yeah.
And, you know, enjoyed it, I mean, made good money and I was able to buy a house, get married, you know, start a family with my wife, but just wasn't a passion of mine, so.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Went to Downers Grove North High School and played varsity soccer for four years.
Yes, sir.
What position?
I was mostly forward, goal scorer.
What do you say?
Goal scorer.
Oh, goal scorer, I see, yeah. How many goals did you score in your entire career?
Oof, maybe I wasn't that good of a goal scorer. I can't recall, sir.
Okey-dokey.
It was a little while ago. Decent.
You can keep going if you'd like.
No, no, I think I'm digging myself deep enough already, so.
Attended Silver Cross Hospital's Paramedic Program in New Lenox.
Yes, sir.
Where you graduated with academic honors at the top of the class.
Yes, sir.
Attended the Romeo Ville Fire Academy, graduated at the top of the class again, and was also the Sergeant-at-Arms and earned a leadership award.
Yes, sir.
What leadership award did you earn?
Um, just.
Wasn't soccer-related, was it?
No, no, thank God. Uh, no, um, so as Sergeant-at-Arms, I'm kind of in charge of our, all the companies, kind of like one of our chiefs or something. So I would get direct orders from the instructors and then pass them on to each company's officer and so I had to not only make sure I was doing what I was supposed to, but what everyone else, and I was in charge and responsible for all the other recruits, candidates that were in the program, so.
Why do you think you were chosen to be Sergeant-at-Arms? What innate leadership abilities?
I was actually, we had another individual who was and decided to, after the first week, not to return, so I stepped up and said I would do it and they told me initially it was on a, you know, like an intern basis, but I just, they asked me if I wanted to continue on with it and I, of course, I wanted to, so.
Fantastic.
Took a lot of pride in doing it, so.
Absolutely.
So, yep.
Very cool. You worked part-time for the Hanover Park Fire Department for two years.
Yes, sir.
As a firefighter/paramedic?
Yes, sir.
Now, it says here you enjoy spending time with Mrs. Castner and of course Carter.
Yes.
And it says family.
Um, yep, the rest of my family is here.
I know, you gotta introduce them, man.
So, uh, the second-to-last row is my sister Jennifer and my brother-in-law Dan. Then in the back corner, started with my wife and my son Carter. Then next to her is my, my mom, Patrice. Then's one of my nieces with a little blondie there named Vivian. There's my nephew Eddie. My sister-in-law Samantha. My other sister-in-law Stacy. My other niece Victoria. My nephew Lincoln and my other sister Kelly, so.
Wow.
Yeah. The other ones, there was other people that couldn't even make it, so.
Are they tuning in, I hope, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I bet your soccer coaches.
Oh, yeah. Probably tailing up all the goals I'd say I didn't score.
Exactly. It's gotta be hundreds.
Oh, yeah. At least, so.
You know, the fire department has a soccer team. They compete against other fire departments.
One's tryouts.
You like traveling. Where do you like to travel to? Don't tell me a two-decker bus to country concerts.
No. Uh, I'm a pretty big history buff, so I like to go to more historic places. Me and my wife went to Washington to check that out not too long ago. Before that, we went to Boston. Other than that, we'll go to warm places, you know, like Florida. Got some family that lives down there. We went to Jamaica. We've been to Grand Caymans and stuff on a cruise. Just kind of all over.
And that was, of course, prior to Carter's arrival?
Yes, sir, yes.
So will traveling become more?
I think it will be more localized, yeah. So, at least for the foreseeable future, so.
And why the fire service, Mr. Castner?
Um, I come from a long family of public servants in my family. I got, my father was a police officer for Riverside for 34 years. My mom was actually a dispatcher there.
No kidding?
So that's how they met. Uh, I got other uncles that are firemen or, you know, in police. Got brother-in-laws that are. So just, everyone was always, how come you, you know, my parents always thought I was gonna go this way in the beginning and, you know, being a young kid out of high school, I want to do my own thing, so I kind of went that route and then I was like, oh, I'm gonna go back. Grass is probably greener on the other side, so that's what I decided to do, so.
Fantastic. Well, we invite you to invite whomever you'd like to join you while the clerk administers the oath of office. We continue on, ladies and gentlemen, with item 3D as in David, and that is the introduction of Geneva Chamber of Commerce President Paula Schmidt. We have the Chairman of the Board with us as well to make the introduction. Welcome them both to the podium.
We're, we wanted to wait a little bit because we wanted to make sure that Paula would survive the art fair and still be with us before we introduced her to you. And she's well on the way to doing Festival of Vine. I don't know if most of you know, but we had, starting in February last year when Jean gave in her retirement, we started immediately the interview process and that led us through part of February, March, April, and May. We had as many as 40-plus applicants. We got it down to 12 that we interviewed. We moved that down to six that we called back and we finally wound up with a small number that we interviewed final time. And so it was a long, arduous process, but by June 1st, we had made a decision and the Board approved Paula and we're very thankful for that. So we're very lucky, I think the one thing to let you know is the thing that was the most important to us is that somebody would fit in with the culture of Geneva. I mean, we've seen the culture up here today. I mean, how, how lucky we could be if we're worried about the world to see the younger generation. As long as we have a gener, younger generation comes out of Geneva schools, I think we're in pretty good. As long as we have a gener- younger generation comes out of Geneva schools, I think we're in pretty good shape. So, we feel the same way about the chamber. Uh, we all work together. It was important that we found somebody that could, wanted to work well with the police and the fire department, the Department of Public Works, and the staff. The staff has been great at welcoming her, and so we appreciate that. And the mayor, uh, has welcomed her, and so we look forward to a long time with Paula. And I'll introduce Paula Schmidt.
Welcome, Paula.
Thank you. I, I just wanna thank you for not making me do an oath.
Yeah, yes. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't know if a, a, a lot of the council members know about your background, but if you would be so kind as to share a little bit about your professional background and, and why the passion and interest in the Geneva Chamber?
Sure. My most recent, um, job was I was with the Kane and McHenry County Medical Society as their executive director. I was there for ten years and I did membership, a membership organization, basically working with doctors. Did a lot of, um, programs for them, a lot of, uh, events, so a little bit like the Chamber is. And when I saw, um, that the Chamber was looking for someone, I, I jumped on that right away. Um, because I love Geneva. I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry, I am from St. Charles and I will try my best, but, um, we come out to Geneva, my husband and I raised three daughters in St. Charles, and, uh, we would always come to Geneva as our, our little vacation away from St. Charles. So, um, have always loved Geneva. My husband and I, even previously before my ten years as an executive director, we owned our own business, a couple of, uh, technology businesses. So I have that background in, um, business ownership, um, which we know is not easy, but it's a, a great, uh, we have to have it, so, um, that's where I came from.
Excellent. Any comments or questions for Paula, from anyone? Alderman Berghardt.
Paula, welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. Um, what, you said as soon as you saw there was the opening or that they were looking for a new executive director, you wanted to apply, so what, what drew you? It's a challenge. It's a smaller organization, maybe, than where you were working before, and what do you think you're gonna like most about the job?
Right now, what I love about the job is just being in Geneva and the people that are, the employees are fantastic. The staff is great. I love doing the, all the events that are going on. It's exhilarating. Um, I'm excited to just keep busy and, and keep moving on and trying to make, um, Geneva a better, a better place for businesses and, and people who live here. And that's what really got me excited. I do a lot, I was doing a lot in, in St. Charles as far as, um, uh, being with Rotary and, uh, the Education Foundation and things like that. So I like to make sure where I'm at is doing well and, and having a set of eyes that can maybe take it a little different direction, maybe, and just, uh, move forward, so.
You said, you know, your experience as a small business owner, what do you think the challenges for small business owners are today in the current climate?
Oh, gosh, just having the, um, one of the hardest things for small businesses, I think, are actually finding employees. It's difficult to find employees. Um, if you have a great city like Geneva, I think it makes it a little bit easier in a train station. And I'm hoping that with the Chamber, we can get a little bit more of that younger blood coming in and getting some of the jobs here, too, in Geneva. So we're looking at that. That's difficult. I think the cost of, of having your own business is hard. It takes a, a little bit of a toll on your family, so it's not, uh, you have to have a certain personality for it. Um, and if that, I'm, I hope our younger generation has that, so that's, I think, the biggest challenges.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, uh, when is Festival of Vine?
Well, we're setting up on the sixth, so if anybody wants to come on down and help us. Um, and then seven through nine. So looking forward to that, so that'll be my first big festival.
It's a favorite of a lot of folks.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of folks.
Yeah, it's a busy one.
It is a busy one.
It'd be nice. Looking forward to it.
Alderman McGowan.
Welcome, Paula. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you.
Um, and it's wonderful that you are kind of like a local as well. You know Geneva. Um, and we have such wonderful relationship with St. Charles Business and otherwise, so, and Batavia and all the others, too. They're all great. I just wanted to, um, mention the email that I received from the Chamber that some volunteer positions are still open for the Festival of Vine.
Yes.
And some of those positions are paid. And if I'm not mistaken, um, high school kids can apply age sixteen and over. So I don't know if some of those, if you still have those openings, but I thought this would be a good time to mention it.
There's, there are some openings. I think one of the, the biggest opening we have are barbacks right now, so they have to be a hair older than sixteen, um, because they kinda help move wine back and forth. But there still are a few other, uh, volunteer positions. Um, we have all of the information booth and all that, but it's, it's a long festival. It's a long day. Um, so we like to get a lot of people involved. So we are looking for more of the helping us to pour, uh, the, the, um, wine and, and help us clean and, uh, that sort of thing. So I, I'll be happy to send an email out again if any, if anybody wants to find out, if you have kids.
I signed up myself for a little session at the info booth, so this'll be my first official, um, I don't know, like, activity with the Festival of Vine. So I'm looking forward to it.
Well, good. Thank you, thank you. That's a good, that's a good one to start at, too, is what I hear, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Learn a lot.
Anyone else on the desk? Alderman Clemmons.
Welcome. I know that we met earlier, had a really nice meeting with you when we were both starting off.
Exactly. I think I met him on my second day.
Yeah, I think, that was the same for me, I think, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be volunteering as well, and there's gonna be lots of opportunities. I think that maybe Alderman Kilburg can chime in on this with Geneva Community Chest. There's going to be, um, wine pouring at Little Traveler. I don't know if you have the email for that, but, um, I can send it to you. There's a signup genius, uh, thing set up for that. I know they're looking for people for that for Saturday and Sunday, so if you wanna come by and, uh, have some wine with me, I'll be around. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. And yes, Paula, could you just refresh everyone's memory? Because I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, Alderman Clemmons, the, um, the tie-in with Geneva Community Chest and the, um, some of the proceeds from the Festival of Vine going towards those, um, I guess, the Geneva Community Chest.
Well, you know what? I think you're stomping me on that one.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I don't know, um, because I know the, the, um, the event that's going on at Little Traveler is separate than the Festival of Vine. So I'm not sure if that, that festival goes more towards the Community Chest. I don't, I do, do you know? Is that true? Thanks. Um, so that's all I know at this point, so I think it's a separate entity.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, a warm welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for hanging out tonight during all the...
Oh, I know, and I didn't even bring tissues if I would've known. But I appreciate it. Everyone has been so welcoming. It's been fantastic, and I appreciate, I appreciate. And I look forward to working with all of you, so, thank you.
Thank you. I skipped over item, I, I messed up, folks, so I, I'd like to offer a proclamation celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Harrington Inn. Is there a motion? This is seconded by Kilburg. The motion was offered by Alderman Marks. Um, as most of you know, this Thursday evening marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Harrington Inn and Spa. There is a fundraising event to benefit the Geneva History Museum. Uh, we are proud to recognize that silver anniversary, and I would entertain a voice vote in support of the motions made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Chief Antonori. We have a fire department presentation, ladies and gentlemen. It seems appropriate this evening.
Sorry, overdressed a bit. Okay. So one of the reasons to get up in front of you every year is that per accreditation, um, um, award, we are supposed to be in front of you and, and get approval of our performance and, and let you know of any performance gaps. So we're gonna be filling two of our accreditation criteria tonight, which is at least on an annual basis. We'll note value of our operational capabilities and any gaps that we see in our delivery model, so. For those that may have seen this maybe only once before, we spend a lot of time on fire and risk analysis in our community. We divide our community into residential and commercial industrial. And we actually look at each occupancy, rate it for low, medium, and high risk. And that's how we design our response patterns. That's how we design how we respond to fires and other emergencies based upon the risks that we face. So the lowest risk in the community is a single-family home. And the highest risk would be something along the lines of a factory like Burgess Norton, giving you an idea of the, the scale of things. We also break down our city into six response planning zones. One, two, three, four, five, six. The upper northwest quadrant's number one and the lower southeast quadrants are, uh, not really quadrants, but sections is number six. And we analyze the data accordingly. And one of the things we look very closely at as a reflection of industry standards is how fast can we get to the call with our first unit? So we have a first due unit goal of six minutes and thirty seconds. It's broken down into three major categories. Call processing, which is nine-eleven answer to tone. So answering the call, hello, nine-eleve- nine-one-one, what's your emergency? To the time they push the button to let us know if something's going on. Our turnout time, that's the time from when the bell goes off, put our uniform, our clothes on, our turnout gear, and get in the rig and actually leave the station. And then the travel time to the scene, which is driving time. We can't really affect travel distance because we have to drive safely. Travel time, that's dependent on weather, traffic, distance to the scene. We can really affect our turnout time. How fast do we get up? How fast do we get moving? And we can indirectly work with the nine-one-one side, but that's, today's day and age, eighty-five percent of the calls now are coming on cell and only fifteen percent on wire line. It used to be a hundred percent wire line. Why is that important? Wire line, you pick up the phone for nine-one-one and your address shows up on the screen, guaranteed. Cell phone callers usually don't know where they're at. The technology can triangulate it down to a particular area, but there has to be some back and forth to say, what do you see, what address you're at? So as more and more people call from inside their home, there is some, some call processing time that's starting to lengthen. And, um, calmness of caller. Some people call in incredibly calm. Some people call in incredibly uncalm, so that takes, takes time. So, kinda give you an idea of those three things. So we look at each response time by response planning zone. We look at the ninetieth percentile, how are we doing on total response time? We're looking at five-year chunks of data. Couple things I like to highlight as the years have gone by, and we'll talk about the reasons why, we're starting to see the total response time creep up a little bit. There's some specific reasons to that. We'll get into. And historically, as I talked about last year, response planning zone one and four are the hardest to get to. One, because of the distance and the road configurations that go into that part of the city. And four, because it resides below the railroad tracks along thirty-one, again, excuse me, it takes longer to get there. Uh, we're aware of that. We're working on areas that we'll talk about, but, um, that's where we're at today. What are we challenged with today versus just a few years ago? The density of traffic, especially this summer, is increasing. Sixty, when sixty-four was shut down to one lane in each direction, I don't know if you noticed, but we did. It was significantly hard to get across town this summer. That's just getting more and more dense. People are developing out west of us. They're coming through town because there's only a few ways across the river. Thirty-eight during the rush hour is difficult to get down now. Driver behavior. From when I started twenty-two years ago to today, people do no longer pull over for the fire trucks. They no longer pull over for the ambulances. They try to outrace you. They don't hear you. Other distractions slowing us down. Our nine-eleve- nine-one-one system, the primary s- public safety answering point, there's been turnover. The economy is good. When the economy is good, people search out other jobs. It, it, when the economy is bad, they tend to come to be telecommunications. It's a difficult job. It's stressful, night work and such because of turnover, training, familiarity, slower. And then it's our first year of a new CAD system, computer-aided dispatch, and there's still some bugs to be worn, worked out. Turnout time, we'll talk about in a minute what we've done to try to improve that. And then just, uh, kind of a peek to the future. The Fabian Bridge repair coming up in the near term, next year. The Union Pacific Railroad Third Rail Project. East State Bridge, East, East State Street reconstruction, the Kirk Road Bridge reconstruction are all gonna happen relatively the same time, and it's going to be a problem for us. So we'll have to work on with our partners. We'll have to work on with our auto aid companies, our mutual aid companies, how we can work around that. So it's just some challenges. We found a little app, and the world is driven by apps nowadays. A smartphone app that takes the feed directly out of Tricom and gives us sometimes up to a fifteen-second pre-alert that there's a call coming on everybody's phone. And you can push a button and it can map the route to the scene from where you're standing. This has helped improve this turnout because the driver no longer has to stop with the map and stare. He can take, he or she can take a quick look. And that extra fifteen seconds at times can, uh, really, really help us. So we're, we've been using it about a year. We're starting to see some progress here. It's a little bit of technology. Future, coming up, a new radio system at Tricom will allow us to drive towards a new station alerting system down the road. The modern station alerting systems receive pre-alerts that may be upwards of a minute. In other words, when the call comes in, they start typing the ticket, as long as they know where they're going and what they're going for. They push a button, it sends a signal, an automated voice dispatches the station. Lights go on even before they push the tones out over the radio system. So we hope that down the road will help cut down on some of this travel time, turnout time, and that type of thing. So, again, technology is probably the answer. In the meantime, we'll continue to monitor it and work on that, so. But our town is bifurcated by a railroad track and a river, so there's only limited crossings, so, makes sense? So in two thousand seventeen, we had five incidents that required us to form an effective response force. In other words, a structured fire response. And our ERF is a minimum of eighteen personnel on the scene in nine minutes and thirty seconds, ninety percent of the time capable of producing three thousand gallons per minute of water flow. It's based on our standard of cover and our critical task analysis. The minimum of eighteen, cover all the critical tasks of a structured fire, rescue, suppression, safety, et cetera. These five incidents, in some cases, we met our nine-minute-and-thirty or slightly over. We had a couple cases where we didn't. The thirty-seven west two-sixty Campbell Road, which was a barn fire back in August of seventeen, there was great confusion on the phone call. The phone answering time took two minutes and thirty seconds because they couldn't figure out where they were, cell phones. And that delayed and, and kept us from meeting our ERF. And nineteen ninety-six South Kirk, any fire that starts as just a fire alarm takes longer to form the general alarm response because it only sends a little bit of, we got there, it was full of smoke. It was a fire in the ice arena back room, so we filled out the alarm and it took a few more minutes to get everybody there, so. But all in all, good performance. Shows that our nine minutes and thirty seconds is a valid metric. And, um, we'll continue to, continue to monitor that. So in eighteen, we had some goals and we've reported this in your packet a few weeks ago. We completed our safety investment program. We continue with our accreditation process. We've created a long-term, ten-year planning cycle. That says this is what we're gonna need over a ten-year period from a capital standpoint, so we can better improve our planning. We're working on a comprehensive update to the preparedness plan. And Chief Passerelli and I have started the first coffee and cake with the chief, so. We had a series of strategic recommendations in two thousand sixteen for the start of the five-year cycle for accreditation. We've completed some of them, and we've had targets on the rest. Uh, fire training with auto aid partners, we have that in place. Italian chief, Alenzu, sitting in the back of the room, who's in charge of training, has that ball, and we've got that implemented. We'll upgrade the International Fire Code and the NFPA Life Safety Code. Safety Code next spring. We've standardized the qualifications for members who do commercial properties, working on a more formal process to evaluate the value and effectiveness of our fire prevention program, and things around the domestic preparedness plan, the EOC upgrades, the unused space. We've identified the needs. Now we're working on the plans, and we'll be back at some point in the future. And we've found ways to accomplish live fire training by working with neighboring agencies, acquired structures, so we've got that well under control. Specific recommendations, special operations equipment, thank you. It's been well-funded in the last two years. We've got those replacement cycles in place. We replaced our relatively old boat. We have a plan when the new engine comes next spring to summer that it will be turned into an advanced life support engine where the, there's seven fire stations in the tri-cities between St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia. Each of the still districts, each of the station districts except for Station 1 in Geneva has an ALS engine. We'll have that caught up, and then I'll provide more backup and first response for the ambulances so we can get there first. The ambulances will follow, especially when we're busy, start advanced life support, and hopefully have better outcomes. The after-action report for an old exercise, stumbled across it the other day. I found it in the files. No joking aside, literally found the raw data. Now we can actually write up the action report, so we'll be able to take care of that. In the plan for 2019, '20, subject to, of course, approval is the hope to fund the new ladder truck. We have started the ground ladder inspection process two years ago, and we are 52% of the way, and probably more for the active members having two sets of gear for safety, so 0 to 5 years and 6 to 10. Next couple cycles, it'll reach 100%, so. Big step in the right direction. We had a lot of old gear that was beyond the 10 years. Everybody's in primary gear that's now less than three years old, and now we're working on the second set, so those are all good. So strategic drivers have stayed consistent as they should, leadership, execution, accreditation, safety and health, planning community, preparedness, training, building back the POC staffing, infrastructure, equipment, vehicle replacement, and then a deeper body of performance-based metrics. This year, working on with Battalion Chief Lenz, a former officer development program, continue with the accreditation. The increasing preponderance of cancers in the fire service, investigation, develop and deploy a more robust cancer prevention program. Continue to work on the domestic preparedness, work on a chaplain program. We're one of the few fire departments in the area that don't have a formal chaplain program when there's a tragedy, have somebody come out and work with the victims, and we're working on that. And then a pretty deep dive in our records management systems, our technology. It's been there for a while. Is there something better we can do? Are we on track? And the proverbial questions.
Questions or comments for the chief? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you for the presentation, chief. It made me think with all the upcoming construction, never really occurred to me that there could be something in the way or between a fire truck and me having a problem.
Not that you've ever had a problem, right?
You certainly met your turnout goal with my garage fire, but with construction, do you, do neighboring communities with our mutual aid agreements, do we say, hey, well, you know, we're going to have a hard time getting to this area, you know, can you be available? I don't know how you work that.
Yeah, we've had preliminary discussions with Batavia due to the pending closure of 31 for a period of time for the overpass, the train overpass, of rearranging still district responses so they can move farther up into our southern end. We may relocate our ambulance to Station 2, but we're in, so we're always in concert with them. And then working with St. Charles, West Chicago, and Elburn, and North Aurora would be our primary folks we'll work with. We may rearrange some things, make sure that rigs can get there faster, because the Station 1 they're going to have to go around. It's going to add some time, so we're already in early talk on that, and we would do the same for them. They'll do it for us.
I would also reiterate, there are job openings at Tricom for 911 dispatching.
Starts at a very good rate, 49,000 and some change to...
Well-paid job.
Untrained, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You had mentioned when people used to call on the landline, it's popped up, and so clearly that was very helpful. And one of your outliers in your response time that you showed, you said it was due to caller confusion because they didn't know where they were. Is it correct that some of the newer phones, I don't know if mine has it, if I call 911 because I have the location technology on here, the GPS, does that, are there cell phones or mobile phones that have technology on them that does allow the dispatcher to see where the phone is?
Yeah, it's phase two plotting. It does bring up a plot on the screen next to them. They have eight monitors, and one of the monitors is the inbound phone, so when it comes in as a mobile, it does give a triangulation, but it's not perfect.
But it's not an address like the landline was?
Not an address. It'll give you a location, so they try to query the caller what their address is and see if it's in the triangle that they see on the screen. If they don't, or if they hang up, the standard procedure is send a police officer to that area, and it's accurate within so many meters depending on conditions of the...
Do you think that that's something that's going to probably continue to improve so that at some point...
I think so.
...will be to the point where somebody does make a call?
Apple's adapted this new standard globally, which would give a much more accurate transmission of GPS coordinates.
Okay.
And as dispatch centers can make the investment and people's phones become like that over the next five years, I think we'll get to the point where it can plot a actual GPS coordinate probably within a few feet, which will certainly help for folks who really don't know where they are.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else on the, oh, Alderman Ruby.
Thank you. I was curious, do you know offhand the average number of 911 calls in each day or each week?
We run, I think, I, you know, the whole of Tricom, I believe, we're in the order, on the order of 60,000 911 calls a year.
Okay.
Which is a significant number of inbound calls.
Sure.
Both for police and fire, because of all the agencies.
Right. So my next thought was, how many of the 911 calls result in the fire department?
Going somewhere?
Yes.
For us, last year was about 2,800 times we were dispatched to calls.
Okay, so roughly 50%?
I'd have to look at the data. I can get that for you. I'd have to look at the number of calls for Geneva fire calls that...
Sure.
Normally, fire calls, you know, normally they result in a dispatch.
Okay.
And some 911 calls are just not 911 calls, and they don't respond to anything, but...
Sure.
People calling up for the time and other associated things, but a lot of those turn into police response calls or fire response calls. But I can certainly get you the statistics.
Well, and I don't necessarily need the numbers. I just, here's where my thought is going. On the response time, 60 seconds for the 911 call and then 90 seconds for the turnout gear. And this may be a bad idea, but I'm wondering if the second that 911 call comes in, if the turnout gear could, if they could begin getting their turnout gear on at that moment and call it practice to, you know, hopefully speed up the time that it does take to get the turnout gear on if they don't need to go out. I have no idea if that's a good idea. It's just a thought.
It's actually, the idea of pre-alerting will get us to that point. Right now, it takes time, the way they do it, and it goes to, from a call taker to the dispatcher, and then he or she reads it and then determines what goes. Pre-alerting would be the call taker answers the call, determines their address, determines the nature of their emergency, let's say in 20 seconds.
Sure.
Pushes a button, the computer takes it from there, and then later on, the dispatcher will get on and finish off the call, so.
Okay.
That's probably where we're going versus waking folks up in the middle of the night just to wake them up and then saying, whoops.
Okay.
And put them back to bed. But the pre-alerting technology, which cities use, shaves off significant amounts of time.
Okay.
And it's really just a computer making the decisions.
Sure.
And there's no human in the middle there until they finish the call take, and then they can tell us some more on the way. So it'll just say, fire, address, Geneva. Lights will turn on. Everybody looks on the monitor and says, okay, we're going to a fire, and then they'll learn more on the way.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep, definitely. Thank you.
Certainly the way of the future.
Alderman Rodecky.
Chief, what's your biggest challenge right now?
Acquiring and training and holding on to people, both career and part-time. The three gentlemen you saw sworn in tonight, we lost three career folks after the May and June move into another department. So both on the career side and also having enough part-timers in the pool, because we have three types of part-timers. Folks that are young kids that get trained and then eventually get hired to be a full-timer somewhere, and they move on. Folks that work in the community, just want to be a fireman on the side, part-time, and then have another job, and then we have career folks that live here that can work part-time away from their career fire job. So we're trying to, and it, it's harder now. People don't volunteer their time. People don't come back for calls as much as they used to. Things have changed. And I sound like an old person, but, you know, Dave and I can remember where, when we were starting 22 years ago, we'd come back for every call because it was time to go out and do something. And now, if it's the weekend, it's tough. So it's really the people and the development and maintaining that, because our community depends on a combination model of career, part-time, and our PSI medics to deliver our services as well as we do.
Anyone else on the dais? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk is considered to be routine by this city council and can be enacted with one motion and positive vote. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion on the omnibus agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments regarding the items asterisked under the omnibus agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item five passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions. Item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $5,957,874.34.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Questions or comments regarding the bills for payment? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
The bills for payment pass unanimously, 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, no abstentions. According to my scorecard, we jumped down to item 13, new business and public comment. Yes, sir. Mr. Clerk, is your microphone on?
Ben McRide is going to be passing something out to everybody on the dais, and I was inspired by the two young gentlemen that were heroes today. And Alderman Ruby asked a great question. How did you cut those seat belts? With a pocket knife, in this case. They're lucky to have one. So what Ben's passing out to you, everybody gets a seatbelt cutter. Keep it in your car, keep it in your keychain.
Wow.
The reason I had these is because I was involved with a military support organization that sent supplies to the troops over in Iraq and Afghanistan. We had a question, a request from a medic, a female medic in Iraq. She said, could you send these seatbelt cutters? Because I had to cut a guy out of a burning Humvee before the ammunition cooked off with my pocket knife. So I found this organization, a company that sold these to us for cost, and we sent about $5,000 over there, tried to equip every medic in Iraq and Afghanistan. So this is inspiration. You guys keep it with you, and they work great, and maybe you can bring them to school. I'm not sure.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Wow. Well, who's going to top that?
You.
New business from any member of the council? I would like to entertain a motion for closed session on the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, subsection C, subsection 5. Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. There is no action following tonight's closed session. A roll call is in order to adjourn to closed session.
Bruno.
Go into closed session.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.